I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is our eighth meeting of the year. It is Thursday, February 25th at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. And commissioners, before we get into the meeting, we have Mr. Bill Lawson with us, and we've asked him to speak on the 175th anniversary of Mahoning Valley Historical Society. Bill, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Good morning. Thank you for coming.
Nice deep voice.
It's my pleasure. Thank you for inviting me to talk about the big anniversary that really hits this coming Monday, March 1st. And that would be, as you mentioned, 175th anniversary of the founding of Mahoning County. And if you could indulge me, I put together a presentation, just want to give you a brief look at where we've been for the last 175 years and maybe a little further than that. And so allow me to get started.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you.
Carol was the first commissioner.
All right. Does that look good for everybody?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Great, great. So as I mentioned, 1846 to 2021, that's quite a bit of time. And let's see what happened. First, I think we need to go even further back to 1800.
Boq County.
That's even before Ohio statehood. In 1800, the territorial governor, Arthur Sinclair, formed Trumbull County, which was at that time almost all of what used to be called the Connecticut Western Reserve. And if you see the map in the foreground here, this is what Trumbull County looked like in 1826. By then, Trumbull County was down to this area that you see outlined in brown. But at one time, it covered the whole area. At the same time, roughly, Columbiana County formed in 1823. And if you look on the right-hand side of the Ohio map behind you, you can see Columbiana County mentioned. And at that point, it went all the way from the Western Reserve Road, which was the Trumbull County boundary, all the way down to the Ohio River and across to the Tuscarara River. And so it was a larger area at that point, too. And then in March 1st, 1803, again, that March 1st date, Ohio statehood came into being. Now, when Trumbull County was formed in 1800, the county seat was worn. And I won't go too far into the political intrigue that surrounds Trumbull and Mahoning County, but let's just say folks in Youngstown were a little put out by that. And so it set in stage a rivalry that continued through the first half of the 19th century.
It was pretty upset.
At this time also, the primary economic activity around here was farming. It was agrarian. Though there were some industries developing, especially milling. And of course, iron started very early in the Yellow Creek Gorge in 1803 as well.
I went too far.
So let's move ahead. Throughout this period, especially in the 1830s and 40s, Youngstown was looking at a way to become a county seat, if not of Trumbull County, then a new one. At the same time, the Ohio Legislature was very much in favor of breaking up the large counties all over the state and forming smaller ones for better, more effective governance. And Youngstown tried, through the legislature, to look at ways of partitioning Trumbull County. In fact, at one point, there was a plan to break Trumbull County into three parts, north, middle, and south. And then Youngstown would be the county seat for the southern new county. But by the fall of 1845, those efforts had stalled because Youngstown literally had no representation with a local residence in the Ohio Legislature. At this time, people in Canfield, especially the business and political leaders, came up with their own plan, and it's called the Canfield Plan. And for the first time, and you can see the map here, the green Columbiana County and the pink Trumbull County, that borderline is, as I mentioned, the Western Reserve Boundary, now called Western Reserve Road. But their plan was to go beyond the old Western Reserve and take part of Columbiana County and the southernmost part of Trumbull County and form a new county in which Canfield would be the seat of government, since it was centrally located in this plan. Well, that plan was approved after some lobbying and debates by the Ohio Legislature on February 16th, 1846, and set in motion quite a bit of change in the next couple of years.
He was there.
Yeah.
Now, immediately after the legislature approved the bill, there were elections in what would be the new county for the various offices and courts. And that happened so quickly that everything was in order. Elected public officials were sworn in, and Mahoning County government was seated on March 1st, 1846. And of course, it was in Canfield, and from there, things developed pretty quickly. Now, in the previous slide, you saw an engraving of the original courthouse in Canfield. Here's a photograph of it, probably around 1880. At this point, you can see the original building. And then there was an annex added with offices and a jail for the sheriff to run later on. But other things that happened in short order was the First County Fair, which was held in Canfield in October of 1847. That was after the Mahoning County Agricultural Society was formed in February of 1847. This courthouse structure was complete and open entirely in 1848. And so things got underway in terms of operating the new county. Meanwhile, Youngstown was not at all happy with these arrangements. But at this very time, was starting to grow through the iron industry and other industries like the canal and railroads, which really opened things up for industrial and commercial developments in Youngstown. And so the population and the economic power began to grow through the late 1840s and 1850s and 1860s. Still, Youngstown wanted to have that coveted county seat. And that came to a head in 1873, when finally, there was petitions to put a ballot referendum in the October 1873 election for removal of the county seat from Canfield to Youngstown. And at the same time, there was a group of Youngstown backers that formed, a group of Canfield backers that formed. They debated locally. They debated at the Ohio State House, and they went to organize the vote for and against. As it turned out, the vote came out in favor for removing the county seat from Canfield to Youngstown during that October 1873 referendum. Now, that wasn't the end of it by any stretch. The Canfield backers immediately filed suits contesting the referendum, its legality, et cetera. It went to the local courts, which upheld the vote in the October 1873 referendum. It didn't stop there. It went to Court of Appeals and the Ohio Supreme Court in 1876, both of which upheld the lower court's ruling in favor of the referendum. And at this point in 1876, the backers in Youngstown had completed a new courthouse, which you see pictured here, which was on the corner of Wick Avenue and East Wood Street and directly across from First Presbyterian Church. And so at that point, after the Ohio Supreme Court ruling, there was a caravan of 40 wagons and horse teams that drove from Youngstown to Canfield, packed up all the county records, furniture, everything related to county government, and brought it back to Youngstown to move into this new courthouse. The fight didn't end until the U.S. Supreme Court heard the case in 1879. And once again, the Supreme Court upheld the lower court's decisions about the county removal. Now, this period, 1876 to 1907, was a lot of growth going on in the iron and steel industry here in the Mahoning Valley, but in particular, the city of Youngstown. Both population and economy and political influence. And also at this time, immigration was fueling a lot of the population gain coming into the region to work in these new industrial jobs. In downtown Youngstown, which was becoming a very big commercial center, there was a lot of pressure for new commercial developments in downtown. Also, you can see the railroad tracks running behind the old county courthouse. There was pressure to move those out of the way as well. And at the same time, the commissioners and the courts realized that this building had grown inadequate to carry on county government. And so the commissioners and a number of city boosters got together and started to plan for a new courthouse. And before we talk a little bit more about that, I wanted to point out two people in particular who had a lot to do with Mahoning County's built environments. Charles H. Ousley came to the Mahoning Valley in the early 1870s. He was an architect, and one of his early commissions was to design that first Mahoning County courthouse in downtown Youngstown. He went on to do many other outstanding buildings throughout Youngstown and the rest of the region. Fast forward to the early 20th century, his son, Charles F. Ousley, newly graduated from the University of Pennsylvania and trained over in Paris in the Neoclassical Movement, got the commission for the next phase in Mahoning County's existence, and that was this building. Planning started and was completed in 1908. What you're seeing there, it's a little washed out, is the actual architect's rendering of what the courthouse would look like. And this was produced and approved in 1908.
Wow, that's...
That's neat.
Much happened that year, especially in June. In Youngstown, there was an Old Home Week planned to bring old Youngstown and Mahoning Valley residents back to town for a reunion. There were balls. There were lectures. On June 11th was the highlight of the whole thing. And you can see down in the corner there, the official program, and I'm going to get to that later. But this was for the cornerstone laying for the new Mahoning County courthouse on June 11th, 1908. And so what happened that day was you had a parade that started on Mahoning Avenue, crossed the Spring Common Bridge, went down West Federal Street, which you can see in the photo. That's what's going on there. At Central Square, made a right turn and went down Market Streets, and ended up in that big hole of a vacant lot that you see there, which was the site for the new Mahoning County courthouse. And they were at that point digging the foundations. And so later that afternoon, you can see here is the actual cornerstone laying ceremony with speakers. And if you look, here's the cornerstone right here. And that's the copper box, which was the time capsule that was laid into this little pocket in the cornerstone on June 11th, 1908. Over here, two people is Charles F. Ousley, the architect. And next to him is Joseph G. Butler Jr., who was one of the leaders of the Old Home Week movement and the new courthouse developments. From 1908 to 1910, this building, of course, was built in all of its grandeur. And you can see early construction there. You can see Charles Ousley conferring with Edwin Blashfeld, who was one of the artists that created the murals, murals in the rotunda. And then down below, on the right, you can see some of the plaster forms that were being made to decorate the interior of the courthouse building. And in March of 1911, the building was formally dedicated and has been the seat for Mahoning County government and courts ever since. And I commend your generation and past generations for maintaining this outstanding building, which really spoke to its time in terms of the wealth and the prosperity, and then also the looking forward that went into designing and executing a building like this. It's very much important to Mahoning County. Now, just to briefly go over about 110 years here. Of course, we're more familiar with the stories of the 20th century. Industrial developments went beyond anybody's imagination. Mass immigration and migration coming into the community. First, you had till 1924 immigrants coming mainly from Eastern and Southern Europe to work the jobs and all the opportunities that were available here at that time. From 1924 well on into the, actually, it started before that and well on into the 1960s, you had the great migration of African-Americans from the American South, who came north. Many settled here in Youngstown and Mahoning County during that period to fill the void and job demands that were lost once the United States government put in their first comprehensive immigration controls in 1924, which really slowed down the rates of immigration into the country. We know after the Great Depression and war, there was pent-up demand for new housing for this huge population that we had in Youngstown and Mahoning County. And so you had post-war suburban development that spread out to what were traditionally rural areas of the county. And you can see the juxtaposition of the two photos in the bottom of this slide. There, of course, is Southern Park Mall, which, kind of a faraway aerial shot, but it's easily recognizable once you look at it. And then you can see some aspect of the industrial development in the Mahoning Valley proper from that black and white photograph right there. Now, that started to come to an end in the 1960s and then accelerated in the late 1970s, early 1980s with a complete dislocation of the steel industry. At the same time, population began to decline. One figure I found very interesting, population of Mahoning County in 1850 was 23,735 people. And by 1970, you hit the peak population for the county of 303,424 people. And something else happened in 1970 that hadn't happened for 80 years. And that was from 1890 to 1970, the majority of the population of Mahoning County lived in the city of Youngstown. In 1970, that changed to where the majority of the population lived outside of the city of Youngstown, but just by a little bit. And of course, demographic trends since then have continued for the Mahoning County population to decline, but also the cities. And now, once again, like it was 175 years ago, you have more of an even distribution of population between cities and county areas in Mahoning County. So I don't want to go too much farther on that, but I think we understand in our own lifetimes what's been happening. And but still, here we are 175 years later, and we have a very rich history and quality of life here in Mahoning County. We are diverse in our peoples. We're diverse in our economic activities. And I just presented some snapshots, both historic and current, of what's going on here in Mahoning County to start to draw things to a close. But in saying happy anniversary, Mahoning County, I just want to point out a couple of more things Mahoning Valley Historical Society is doing next week. If you go to our website, mahoninghistory.org, we have a section of blogs there. It's called Time Capsules. And we will be inserting a new blog on Mahoning County's 175th anniversary, which will give you even more detail on the political machinations that came about to create Mahoning County in 1846 and where we've been to some extent since then. Also, on Monday, March 1st, the anniversary dates. Mahoning Valley Historical Society has a Facebook page, and we have a regular feature called Mahoning Valley Artifacts. And that, too, will commemorate the 175th anniversary of the county. So with that, I say thank you for allowing this time to observe our county's history. And I appreciate the fact that the commissioners and the staff fully appreciate and celebrate this great history.
Bill, we want to thank you for that in-depth historical exploration of where we've come and where we are now in 175 years. Carol Rigetti, Commissioner Rigetti, has a question.
No, I just have a comment. Bill, you are fabulous. That was excellent. Short presentation of where we're at, where we've come from. And you reiterate the fact that Youngstown is the hub of Mahoning County. And I am so proud to be a part of being, living in Youngstown. There's so much history here that we don't actually see enough of. And I would definitely like to, I mean, I know my colleagues would. I would definitely like to have a, when we are allowed to move on and do things because of the pandemic, I would love to have one of them ride-alongs from the beginning of when this was brought to Youngstown for the groundbreaking and then have a presentation of our new renovated historic courthouse, which is the most beautiful courthouse in the world. It has original paintings, as you said. There's history there. We just don't appreciate the Mahoning Valley like we should. We don't. And I mean that for all of us. We all think we need to move somewhere else, or we need to do this. But we don't appreciate what we have in the history that brought us to this point. I am so proud that, I'm so happy you did this. You're one of the better or the best historians we've had for our historical society. So thank you and your staff, and I'll see you in the neighborhood.
Very good.
Well...
Bill, can you stop the sharing so the commissioners can see you?
Hey.
Sure thing.
Hey, Bill. I had one comment. It was funny because when I was trustee in Austintown, Mayor Kozar from Canfield was the mayor at the time. And he sent me an article from the 1800s, and I think it was right when Canfield was the county seat. And he sent an article that said an Austintown farmer, an Austintown man, shot and killed the Canfield constable. And it said he escaped on the railroad tracks on a pump car that traveled, you know, west or that traveled north out of the county seat. And it was this big article, and he had blown it up and sent it to me. And I was reading it, and it was an actual article. And here it was, the old bike, or the new bike path. It was the railroad tracks there that went from Canfield through Austintown and, you know, and went west. And I thought it was a joke at first. And then when I ran into Mayor Kozar, he had told me that it was true. Someone from, someone, they don't know at the time, but the article was written. They didn't know where the person was that, or who the person was that shot the constable. But he killed the Canfield constable and escaped through Austintown on the pump car, you know. It was, I mean, it was humorous to read today on the chain of events. Obviously, not a humorous story, but, you know, it was from the 1800s in that timeframe.
Well, thank you for that. And if you read 19th century newspapers, you soon realize how little human nature has changed and problems they had then were having today as well. And I want to go back and thank Commissioner Rigetti for your wonderful comments. I know my face is a little bleached out on this screen, but I've been blushing here. But we certainly appreciate our mission to collect, preserve, and teach the history of all people here in the Mahoning Valley and Mahoning County in particular. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Well, Bill, in closing, I'd just like to say that your dissertation today, within 10 to 15 minutes, could not have been learned, or nor was I ever taught in my college history classes or high school. I learned more from you here today about the history of our valley. And it certainly makes me appreciate even more what we have here. And you really have some great information. And we look forward to working with you, Bill, when we do the time capsule. Get us going on that. Maybe we should revisit this in the next month or so. And get that going with Jim Fortunato, our purchasing director. And I think Jimmy wants to say something.
I've been in conversation with Bill as recent as last week.
Okay.
I've been working with Paul Ruchudi, who was instrumental in getting me the 3D scans of the statues. Our next step is to go get what America makes, see if we can have those for when we do the time capsule.
Okay.
Bill is going to walk with us through the courthouse. He initially did on what we need to do with not only the time capsule, but coming into the courthouse. So we have been working. The big pause has been the virus, as well as it took us a long time to get those 3D scans.
Right.
And we finally got them last week.
Oh, we got them. Very good.
And I'm going to try to see who, Bill gave me a couple suggestions, who to see.
Okay.
I'm going to see if somebody will do it for community, for wanting to be involved and not charging the county for it, and us recognizing them when we do the time capsule.
Beautiful.
And we do have the original time capsule, as well as the new one, ready to go when it gets to where we have the 3D statues. And we can celebrate and have people come downtown and be part of all this.
Right. Both things are in motion to do this, because if things loosen up, we want to do that.
Yes.
Maybe by June.
We're in motion. The big good thing was getting a scan of the statues. Because that is something that is very meaningful to this courthouse. And I think people would want to have those as part of being involved with all we've done to renovate.
Right. That's something we didn't mention.
I think they'd rather have a 3D schedule, a 3D statue of the three of us than the statue, right?
We could actually put that on the back of the statues upstairs.
I'll step aside on that one. Okay, Jimmy, anything else?
No, just thank you, Bill. I'll be in touch.
All right.
For Bill.
Go ahead, Sarah.
You know, those murals that stand on the walls in all of the courtrooms, they're so vivid and provocative. And I've always wondered, when I have a chance to get in there, which I'm not arrested enough to be in there. But, you know, does anybody know what the story with those murals is?
That's right. Those are... There is some publications. I mentioned one of the artists, Edwin Blashfeld, who was very well-known in his time. Because all across the country, celebrating our industrial might and economic prosperity, you had buildings and projects like Mahoning County courthouse that were finely decorated, both in the building materials, but also the artwork and statuary that went into the buildings. And I think, I know the late art teacher from Rayon, whose name just went right out of my mind, and Phyllis Baird, they worked with restoration of those murals back in the early 1990s. And somewhere, there is an account of the artists and their contribution to the Mahoning County courthouse and also nationally.
Bill, you mentioned earlier about the architects, the father and son.
Yes.
And you said that the son was a graduate during the Neoclassical period. Did that have a lot of bearing on the way the architecture is and what's in the courthouse?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, as I mentioned, he got his degree in architecture from the University of Pennsylvania. Then he studied in Paris in the École des Arts. And that was the height of the Neoclassical Movement over there and in other places in Europe. And he brought that back to the Mahoning Valley. And you look at the courthouse, you look at the second Rayon High School up on Benita Avenue. You look at other courthouses and schools throughout this region. He really brought that to bear throughout his early career. And then as tastes change in the 20th century, his style did a little bit, too. A great example of that is you go from 1908 with Mahoning County courthouse to the late 1920s and early 1930s with the development of the water... to the late 1920s and early 1930s with the development of the water purification and, and pumping stations for the Mahoning Valley Sanitary District out in Weatherfield Township. All those buildings there, he also designed and really a, a unique and beautiful collection of public works buildings.
Interesting.
And you know what I think? I honestly think that the courthouse paintings that are on the wall, because of his European training and parents drove some of that thinking on what he looked at or what he felt would be the arms of justice in the courthouse from nothing to, you know, justification. I think there's a lot to that. That would be an interesting book to read about the history of that, the paintings here.
Bill, I had one question for you and I don't know if you could answer this. And on top of the courthouse, there's a little quote, says, "A nation cannot outlive justice where law ends, tyranny begins." Was that a quote from a president?
That was Theodore Roosevelt, I believe.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yes.
See, if I'm on Jeopardy, I'm going to get that right. Thank you.
Certainly.
Best president.
Well, does anybody else have anything for Mr. Lawson? No?
Bill, be ready for the party.
Yes, sir.
We're going to have a big party. We're going to have a march. We're going to do a, not a march, a parade. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. We're going to have a parade the way they came into town to start the building and everything on our new courthouse.
And Bill, what's the actual date of the 175 years that you mentioned earlier?
March 1st. It'll be this Monday, March 1st.
Monday, March 1st.
Yes. And I will, will mention also, we're looking forward to helping in any way we can with the dedication of the new time capsule. Reminder that we have the contents of the old time capsule stored safely in our archives down at Tyler History Center. And if we want to bring those out to show to everybody again, we're, we're happy to do that.
We should do it. Jimmy, we should do that.
Right. Did you get the, the newspaper articles that are, that were in there? Did you have, you can't laminate those.
There's a lot that, and Bill will tell you, because of how old and proper storage, you can't just display everything. We talked about perhaps
How about a case?
plane. Well, we're, we're looking at that, what to do.
Is there any articles in those newspapers that Ed Runyon wrote that were in the time capsule?
I don't know. There's an important thing I'll say.
Pete Milligan knows history of that courthouse.
Pete Milligan wrote a few of them. I know that.
A gentleman in the past that worked for Tony Vivo was also in his story in this building. I forget his name. I feel really bad.
Ed Black.
Thank you very much.
Two important things in me closing is we won two awards. We won one award local and Bill was part of that with Ohio Historical Society on the courthouse restoration preservation. And Columbus, we won another one for our statues.
Thank you, Jimmy, for bringing that up.
Two awards. And if you want to talk about architecture, who's helped us a lot is Paul Ruchudi. Talk to him sometime and he'll tell you all these buildings and the significance of the architects that did our courthouse and others.
Yeah, Paul was the one that told us about the two gentlemen that are in the statue on top.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Well, Bill, thank you again. This was really, really enjoyable. And we appreciate your knowledge and your dedication to the history of our valley. And I'm surprised the Library of Congress hasn't taken you out of here. You would certainly be a great pick to be one of their archivists. You're just amazing. And we really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Thank you. Okay, that was great. Wow. I'm so glad we did this. Great guy. All right. Well, we got to get to business here. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve previous minutes of board meeting number seven and approval bills for payment.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes. Okay. Motion to approve advertisement for bids, one and two.
So. And so.
Oh, Anna, I'm sorry. Anna, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners, Nancy. The first advertisement for bids is Austintown Township Resurfacing and Improvement Project. And the second is the Beaver Township Woodwork Neighborhood Improvement Project Phase One. These are the first two projects to get underway from our Community Development Block grant fiscal year 2020 award.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve advertisement for bids, one and two.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes. Motion to approve journal entry?
Motion to approve journal, journal entry number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes. Moving on, we have agreements, letters A through B, and we will begin with lead. And we have Danny Martin, I believe.
Dan, can you unmute?
Dan?
Dan. He's muted. He's just got to unmute his phone. Dan, can you unmute your phone?
There's Juke.
That's okay. We'll handle it.
All right. Let me just do it.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners.
Oh, there he is. Morning, Dan.
How are you today?
Good.
Good. Okay. A letter A is an agreement with American Penical Construction for landowners control work at 145 East Philadelphia. A lot of our contracts that will be coming through will be a little bit more than usual because we're using our C2BG funds from the city of Youngstown. So therefore we could do a little bit more work in these homes.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Recycling, Lou Vega.
Morning, commissioners. This is our agreement with Hazmat in, to, to be able to address any activities arising from hazardous materials releases incidents that may threaten life, property and/or the environment.
Thank you, Lou. Sanitary, Mr. Genetti, good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Letter C is an agreement with SET Incorporated. This was for a 12-inch water break on Mahoning Avenue out near Lake Milton. The amount was $5,845.60. That was non-general funds. Letter D is an agreement with Republic Services, the carbon limestone landfill. This is for disposal of used sand and solid mixtures from the Damascus and Deal Lake wastewater treatment plants. Estimated amount is $1,770. Also non-general funds.
Thank you, Pat. Motion to approve agreements?
Motion to approve agreements A through D.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Change orders. Letter A, Pat.
Commissioners, letter A is change order number one with APOOR Company. This was for the Hopkins Road Bridge, number 59. This resulted in a decrease amount of $8,807.14. This project was 100% federally funded.
Very good. Thanks, Pat. B, C and D, Danny Martin.
Yes. Okay. B and C are change orders for, under our chip grant, which we're getting ready to close out. That's a 2018 chip grant. And D is a change order for landowners control work on Hellman.
Okay.
D?
C.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Motion to approve change orders?
Motion to approve change orders A through D.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes. We have appointments for A and I will defer to Sarah Lown from our court authority. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners. This is the annual Texas Center Review Committee time of year where we review all of the abatements for all of the companies that we work with in Mahoney County, including the Enterprise Zone Program, the CRA Program and the TIPS. And we are very happy to have the appointments that the commissioners have made, including Mr. Jim Fortunato here. And so I'm grateful to you for making these appointments.
Oh, Senor Fortunato. Welcome, Jimmy. He's got a good set of eyes, let me tell you.
Yes, he does. And we need that.
Fantastic. All right. Motion to approve appointments.
Motion to approve appointments, A?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes. Motion to approve resolutions.
Motion to approve a resolutions additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Ditster?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Rigetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes. Resolutions, A through G. Audrey or Anna?
Audrey. Commissioners, this is a resolution authorizing the lease agreement with Compass Family and Community Services for space at the Mahoney Valley Campus of Care. And Sarah's here. I don't know if you want to give us this a quick update from where we are. This is one of the leases for the permanent space.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. We, we have been working with Compass and they have taken the lead by committing themselves to two of the 10 buildings out on the Campus of Care. And by mid-March, they hope to move into their administrative offices.
Great.
Painting has just been completed and it's looking very nice in there. And we're very excited. We, we do have some roof issues and those, we just came up with that. But we're, we're threading through all of this and Joe has been great to work with, Joe Caruso and his team. And we've gotten all of the security measures in and fixed the doors and fixed the electric and everything else. And we think they'll enjoy that when it comes time to move in. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Jake. Oh, who's on?
It's Michelle.
Is Michelle on? Do you want to bring her on?
Yes, she is. She's 71. Michelle?
Oh, Michelle, State Representative Michelle Hagan.
I mute your phone.
Michelle?
Hi, this is Representative Michelle LaPorte Hagan. Are you guys there?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Can you hear me? Okay, hi. Thank you for, for allowing me to address you. And, and thank you for all the great work that you're doing. And I appreciated the report from Sarah. Thank you so much, Sarah, for everything that you've been doing. I want to just stress the importance of working and keeping in, in communication with each other from the state level, the county, the city, federal. We are all working together for these incredible projects. And I'm really proud to be able to say that we're working really, really, you know, across the aisle, across my camera, across Senate and the House, and working with Senator Rulie and from the House. We are just introducing an amendment to support the Campus of Care at 1.5 million. So, so what happens, just a quick, quick wrap-up here. The budget process starts in the first year of the General Assembly. So we are, it starts in the House and we're, we are initiating our request at this point in the House. So because it starts in the House, I initiated the amendment and will drop it into the budget that will be, that will be passed over to the Senate or voted over to the Senate. If it doesn't make it into the Senate regardless, Senator Rulie will have this amendment and he can introduce it then in the Senate. So we have a backup to ensure that we have a voice here. But anything that you can do to, to support us with this amendment, this will be the only amendment at this point that I'm putting in for the budget for this community. So I'm going to put extra hard in the House. Any support that you can give me, I would really appreciate it. And if it doesn't make it out of the House, you know that we've got the, you know, the, the insurance, the assurance that we have, Senator Rulie with the same amendment who will introduce it then in the Senate. They are not at the point yet in the Senate where they're, where they're introducing amendments because they have to look at our budget first that we have. Because the budget process starts in the House and then goes to the Senate. So just want to let you know, heads up, this is what we're moving on. I'm heading down to Columbus for session right now as we're speaking. So I appreciate it for you doing. And let me know if you need any more information about our amendment. I can share it with, with all of you. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Michelle, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Michelle.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. And you know what? I'm also happy to hear that as, as it was before, you know, one of your priorities. But we move along and we move to the future here. And, and it's good to know that there's that bipartisan support. And I'm glad that you and Mike are working close together on this project. I know your heart's been in it forever and Mike is now a part of it. And I'm just happy to know that he will be with you. And as two Mahoney Valley people, you guys could forge this forward and get us that 1.5 million.
Thank you, commissioner. I appreciate that. Yeah. You know, I was there my first, my first term in the legislature when they shuttered the YDC. And, you know, I watched the families suffer. It was really horrible. So that, you know, if this can be completed by, you know, my whole term in the legislature, it would be rewarding for me personally, but also for our community. It's a much-needed asset. And it's supporting so many wonderful agencies that serve so many people in Mahoney and Trumbull and Columbia County, actually. So thank you for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michelle. We appreciate your leadership all these years to deliver this project. And we appreciate how you're working down there with Senator Rulie and everyone to hopefully make this happen. And anything you need from us, you just let us know.
Will do. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I think we were with Jake. Is that right? Good morning, Jake.
Jake from State Farm. Hey, good morning. I guess I was muted. Good morning. This is a request to purchase goods, services, software, hardware from Tyler Technology in excess of $50,000. It is through a cooperative purchasing. And Tyler Technology is, I'm sure you all know, is such a critical application, really a flagship product for the county for our operations, payables, receivables, HR, payroll, timekeeping services. So very critical to the success of what we do here.
All right. Thank you, Jake. Moving on, lead, Mr. Martin.
Good morning again. This is a moral obligation under our 2018 chip grant for some rehab change orders. And we're getting ready again to close out that grant.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Lou Vega.
Commissioners, we're asking for approval of the appointment of Operations Secretary. This would go to fill a vacant position that was left due to retirement.
Very good. Risk management, Kathy? Kathy Jones? No? Audrey?
This is a resolution approving appointment of a part-time clerical specialist for the risk management department.
Okay. Thank you, Audrey. And sanitary, Mr. Genetti.
Commissioners, letter F is a resolution declaring a surplus vehicle and authorizing the transfer to the sheriff's office for the Mahoney County Dive Team. This is a 2013 Ford E250 cargo van. And letter G is a resolution of necessity to purchase a Ford F-550 four-by-four crane truck from M-Tech Company through the state of Ohio purchasing. The pricing is in the amount of $133,356.
Thank you, Pat. Motion to approve resolution?
Motion to approve resolutions, A through G.
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes. And for the good of the order, any elected officials or department heads care to comment at this time?
I, I would.
Pat?
I want to commend Bill on his presentation. And one of the things that in his early slides, he pointed out the configuration of the counties. And the one map showed the northern part of Mahoney County as being known as the Connecticut Western Reserve. In the surveying world, that, that carries a lot of significance. And we have to carry forward that history in today's surveys. So as a surveyor, you have to know which district you're in in Ohio. Ohio was known as the experimental state for surveyors. So if you look, everything west of Ohio is relatively rectangular. So the rectangular system, the public land system was born in Ohio. You know, Western Reserve Road is the dividing line between the Connecticut Western Reserve to the north and the Congress lands to the south. If you ever look at a county map, all the townships in the southern part of the county, south of Western Reserve Road, are six miles square, divided into 36 equal sections, one mile square each. Townships to the north are five miles square, divided in quarters. As a surveyor, you have to understand the different surveyed districts and the importance of how the townships, sections, so on and so forth, were established. So it's really interesting. And I think all of you know, you know, how, how much And I think all of you know, you know, how much I appreciate the history of surveying. And I have that old instrument that was donated by the granddaughter of George Montgomery, who was one of the county's early surveyors in the 1800s and county engineer in the early 1900s when the title changed. So I just want to commend him on a very thorough presentation. It's very interesting. I was never really a history buff until I started surveying and understanding. We were retracing the steps of the original surveyors. And we oftentimes run into a lot of that along the state line. Along the state line between Ohio and Pennsylvania, there's mile markers that were originally established in 1795 and re-surveyed in the 1800s. And a lot of those monuments are still there, and they're very accurate. It's pretty impressive knowing that these surveyors were able to set marks in one-mile increments back then where there were no roads. There was a lot of American Indians thinking the surveyors were taking the property from them. But the accuracy, when we go out with GPS and robotic total stations and compare how they did things in the 1800s, it's extremely impressive. So I just wanted to comment on that and thank Bill for his hard work and how much, you know, I appreciate that as a professional as well.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it very much. Anyone else?
And you know what? That instrument, Dave, you know what, Pat, when we have the presentation downtown, is that the surveyor's instrument, Dave? That you gave to Pat?
No, 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 no.
You know what, those-
No, the granddaughter gave it to Pat.
Oh, okay.
From the engineer.
Oh, okay. Those have to be down here when we have the historical day right in our own courthouse. So we actually could have people see the history that's here. I don't think our Mahoney County people really understand all the history that's in Mahoney County and why people that leave here. You can meet somebody from anywhere in the United States. And when you, there's always someone that says, oh, I'm from Mahoney County, or I live there. And that has a lot to do with the history and everything that we have here. So, you know.
Okay, anyone else? Dwayne?
No, I just wanted to support Representative Hagan. Want to thank her for doing this, it's great. We had a presentation with, we made a presentation to Representative Hagan, Katrina, and Rulie for our agencies about the budget for mental health. And Michelle did an excellent job selling the Campus of Care, and both the guys jumped right on board. And I was out there last week, and Head Start is already in those classrooms, there's baby cribs in some of the rooms. It's really, it's really just, it's a wonderful place, and it's getting refurbished the way it's supposed to be. I think so alters in there boundless, which will be bringing new services to Mahoney County for the DD population. A lot of professionals are coming in, going to create jobs. They're already remodeling. I know Compass is remodeling the office or financial department will be moving in there. So slowly, life's coming back. But I know Sarah's trying to set up a tour. You got to go out and see it, it's really something.
Yep, we're excited. We want to go see our buildings.
Absolutely.
Those Mahoney County Commissioners, they're pretty damn good.
Yeah. Thank you very much, because I tell you, there were moments, but it's all behind us now, so.
That's right. We're very fortunate. Thank you, Dwayne. Anybody else? No?
Is this just for general comment? I have something. Shay McMillan?
Go ahead, Shay.
Oh, great. Shay McMillan with the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber. I'd also like to thank Bill for his fantastic presentation. I love local history, so I took a lot of notes. And I think I've already texted some friends telling them about the creation of Mahoney County. So thank you, that was very enjoyable. But I just wanted to echo the good news with the Macy's project that was announced earlier this week. And say, we met with the consultants, and when I say we, I mean myself with the Chamber, the Port Authority, Jobs Ohio, Team Neo, and sat down in December and put together a project team to answer all of the company's questions and get the needed information to them in an incredibly timely manner to win this project for the Valley. We were competing with two other states, and it feels good to get an early win in 2021.
Shay had a question for you. I know you've worked with the Port Authority and Jobs Ohio. The total investment, is it $45 million expansion into North Jackson?
Actually, it's 29 million.
Okay. Sarah, did you want to comment too? Sarah Lown?
I want to commend Shay for being such a great project manager on this. And we were just on the phone last night about some of these things. You know, he's been very careful to win the support and coordination of the local jurisdiction and all of the ED partners. And part of that cooperation is what leads to the success. And so I'm looking forward to seeing this thing get done.
How many jobs possible is it? I heard 400, Shay? Do you know?
Yes.
How many possible jobs?
They're going to retain the 55 that they have at that facility. And as they convert it into a fulfillment center to support their macy's.com business, they will be hiring 417 employees. Actually, the largest project as far as job creation goes in Mahoney County since the creation of Jobs Ohio.
Fantastic. That Bailey Road corridor is amazing for development. It's good to see this. Thank you for all your hard work, Shay, what you do, and working with all of our partners in the Valley to make it happen. That's where it's at.
Absolutely, thank you.
Audrey Tillis?
I want to say too, I want to commend the Commissioners too, because they did some tips out there to help, will help with some of the infrastructure and some of the money that's going to be building up in the fund that worked with Jackson Township in order to help the infrastructure with all the roads and everything else. So that, you know, I just want to give the Commissioners credit for that too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Audrey.
And that's very important.
Yeah, let me add, because Jackson Township kind of took a leap off a cliff and said, we don't want to do any more property tax abatements, you know.
Yes.
Since they made that decision, they've had more expansion and relocation projects than ever before. So that was kind of a lesson to all of us. But yeah, the Commissioners did a tip for some of those new projects, and that allowed the township to recover some of its infrastructure money and fix those roads and get the residents happy again, you know, with the condition of the infrastructure.
Yeah, I remember that.
For you guys, thank you.
Residents should be extremely happy out there because their tax base is going to all rise to the level with more jobs. And it's nice to see, and it's very enlightening to see that the Port Authority, as well as the Chamber and everybody else, are working very closely together. Because each of these entities have different functions to help business come to this area, so.
Another thing, and Pat can speak on this, but another thing the Commissioners are looking at in that area too, is they're doing a rate survey, Pat, on that area as far as expansion that way, related to all the plants that's happening there and in Lordstown. You want to speak on that?
Yeah, that's part of the feasibility study for determining the rate structure at the sanitary engineering department.
And that's, it'll help with some of the expansion and additional need out that way.
Great. That's a good thing, right? That's a good thing. Fantastic. Anything else, Shay? Sarah? Oh, you're good? Thank you. Okay. Dave, Carol?
Dave? Yeah, no, I think that everybody kind of stole the thunder off everything, so there's not a lot left to talk about. But yeah, I was real happy to see the Macy's, and I thanked the port and the chamber, you know, for their hard work. And I know that, you know, we get a lot of calls asking us information. There's a lot of NDAs signed that people aren't allowed to disclose things at the time. And a lot of stuff is kept under wraps. But, you know, we're proud that the Port Authority does the job they do on behalf of the whole Valley, Mahoney, Trumbull County. And they work very well for us, and they're a great tool. It shows that when you cooperate and you have good people on the board and on the staff, what amazing things can happen. You know, what is the adage that it's amazing what can happen if nobody cares who gets credit for it? You know, so a lot of good things happening out there. And, you know, we get kickback from people that oppose everything, you know, and they're out there, all the naysayers that, you know, things are going to Lordstown. Well, things go to where the interstate exits. You know, that's where transportation starts and begins, is in the areas, and that's where the construction and the building, you know, begins, is where the interstates are. Whether it's in Austintown, on Bailey Road, North Jackson, you know, all those areas out in Beaver Township. Those are the expansion areas because those are the interstate and the interchanges. And it's great to see Jackson Township, Tom Frost and the trustees out there do a yeoman's job, all of them in Jackson Township. Like Sarah referenced, you know, they wanted to get rid of any of the tax abatements because they feel that they're a desirable location that entices people to come. God bless them, they made the right move. The TIPS are something that, you know, I was a big advocate for in Austintown, and couldn't get one done, you know, in Center Point. Moved to the county, and our board has been able to create the first tip. So it's a tool that helps all the counties in the state of Ohio. And I'm glad that we're able to move forward with those. It's been, you know, very prosperous on behalf of economic development. And I look forward to the things happening in not only Jackson, but Lordstown. On the opposite end of the spectrum, I was disappointed to see that the Endurance wasn't the truck that was utilized for the postal service. Disappointed in our federal government in the state of Ohio. You know, you have a lot of House representatives, you have our senators, you know, you had a pretty even amount of Ds and Rs working on it. You know, I wish that the federal government would have spent more time in the state of Ohio, working on behalf of the residents of Ohio instead of bickering. So that would have brought 5,000 more jobs to Lordstown for the Endurance. So that is disappointing as a whole. But I'm glad that Jobs Ohio and the Chamber and the port do such a good job on our behalf. Macy's is a great project, like the other warehouse that's coming into the area. Mom's Meals expanding, you know, a lot of good things happening in the Valley. And I'm proud that our board's able to be part of it, and the staff that we have helping along the way in YDC. We can't say enough about that. It's just a phenomenal project opportunity. And Michelle Hagan, Carol, everyone that has worked so hard, it's a wonderful thing.
Best thing in the world.
Thank you, Dave. Carol?
No, I think I've said enough all through this meeting. I just want to thank everybody. I'm excited, today's a good day. And I'm always excited to hear history about Youngstown, Ohio. I really am. I think that's the greatest, since we are the hub of Mahoney County. We really are, and I think everybody knows that. So I just want to thank everybody that worked on all of these projects. Dwayne, you know, always with the Campus of Care and pushing forward with your boards. Everybody has boards they have to talk to and get information to and convince that these are things that we should be doing. And you, as a leader at the Mental Health Board, and Bill Whitaker, as a leader with his board, I believe you have taken to the other level. And with everybody's will, this will go forward. And we'll be having a big picnic out there next year underneath that beautiful pavilion with lighting and a band. And we'll be able to do it the right way with all the partners.
It sounds like fun.
And I'll cook it.
And I'll play it, Carol will cook it, and Dave's going to sing.
And Dave will sing.
Right?
Absolutely.
And now we'll have a real party, and we're going to have a party here for the courthouse too. I think to bring everybody together. Oh, yes. We'll bring some of the old bands back to sing with us here.
Carol, Dave, thank you. Thank everybody here for all the input today. And I agree with Dave, you know, with this Endurance and the, you know, the electric postal car. I can't believe that we missed that opportunity in the Valley. Everybody in the country knows that there's a battery plant here. We have an electric truck being made here. We have LG Kim here. We have General Motors here. How the heck we lost it to the state of Wisconsin is beyond my imagination. It would have been one heck of an investment in addition to the 2.3 billion that's being invested out there in Lordstown for the battery plant. But that being said, we have a lot of other positive things that we discussed here today. And I thank all the people for your knowledge and your partnerships and working for the betterment of Mahoney County. And with that being said, Nancy, our next meeting?
It's going to be March 4th, right here.
Okay, March 4th. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Dickson?
Yes.
I'm having so much fun, I may say no.
Yes. Yes, thank you all.
You know what I want you to ask tomorrow?